I haven't tried it.
No, they haven't tried.
I don't know.
There it is.
You know, it's a different week, different day.
No, I remember that.
She was like, oh, that's so exciting. We will start out with a special meeting. We have a whole second act and then we do what needs to be done for the special meeting. And then we close the special meeting and all that other stuff. And then we open just the making.
Our own.
And sometimes we bring that over as a start. You know, I've said it so much and I've read what it stands for, you think I would remember?
Oprah?
Yes.
Office of Community and Rural Affairs. I know we talked about a lot of averages.
It's a multiple, isn't it?
Yeah. When I first started working for county government, that was one of my first jobs was to make a spreadsheet of all the afternoons.
Yeah, yes, sure.
So you guys can sign in. Okay, so I have six thirty. So we're going to go ahead and get started. Tonight, we have a special meeting that will begin before our our normal monthly meeting. So I officially words, make a motion to bring a special meeting to order.
I second.
Okay, and I'm going to give the floor to Neil Rourke from Klein Peter Consulting Group. And he will fill us in on everything that this special meeting is for.
I'm going to do that and Maureen's going to give you the details.
Okay.
Yeah, this is for the record, you have to read. I am Neil Rourke with Klein Peter Consulting Group. Notice that this public hearing was posted in the Journal in Curator on ten one twenty five. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to discuss the application for grant funding to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We are applying specifically for wastewater grant to an amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We will contributing a local match of ten million one hundred and four thousand dollars in the form of SRS and RBC funds. It is anticipated that breakdowns will be five million dollars from SRS and five million one hundred and four thousand from rural development. We have a proposal due on October twenty fourth and we need to have a second public hearing in December. We want to make sure that all the citizens are fully informed and have the opportunity to voice concerns or support for the project and ask any questions. Funds available for Ogra. Work for the Ogra wastewater project are limited and applications are very competitive. If the town is successful with their application, award announcement should be accepted. And that's all I have. Will you read?
I can speak briefly to this project. So, because many of you know here, we've been working on this project for two years now, starting with the Ogra, the Community and Rural Affairs Planning Grant that looked at your needs, whether wet water, wastewater, and stormwater systems. And while we found concerns at the water utility and with your stormwater issues, it was clear that the wastewater utility was your most dire need. So after extensive review of both your wastewater system and of many concerns at IDN, the Indiana Department of Fire and Land Management, we concluded that your wastewater treatment plant had exceeded its useful life and must be replaced. That's the preliminary engineering report we produced for the town we used to submit for the funding. So I can provide more details if needed on these issues, but basically the treatment plant is aging. There are no replacement parts for some of the most critical pieces of equipment. And this has resulted in multiple violation notices from IDN documenting F fluid violations of wastewater treatment plant. That's, that's, we don't want yet the F fluid violations. In essence, that's cross-suitish. So, and again, it's just a matter of the treatment plant is aging. And it doesn't have anything to do with operation or maintenance of the plant. Operation plan is as good as it can be, but it's just an old, old plant that needs to be replaced. So also, the wastewater treatment plant is currently only running at approximately fifty percent of operational capacity. This is not sustainable and actions required to ensure that the town will be able to add footrests to treat the wastewater. Driving this decision to replace the town's existing wastewater treatment plant are health and sanitary concerns that have been raised by IDN. So they've been repeatedly documented by IDN and it's triggered what's called an agreed order from IDN. That's the, that's the most serious step that IDN can take against a town's wastewater treatment plant. It compels the town to take action or to face increasing monetary fines that grow heavier as each time, as time passes. So we did work at several cost-saving alternatives. And that included a wastewater regionalization study that we did for the town. That we got grant money to do that wastewater regionalization study. Looked at regionalizing with the neighboring community. But that regionalization study concluded that having the town replace its, having the town of Clarksville replace your annual wastewater treatment plant with a new wastewater plant was actually the most cost-effective solution. So as for the scope of this project, we're proposing to construct a new sequential batch reactive treatment facility, which is just a version of wastewater treatment plant that is appropriate for this size community. That would include a new influence list station, new emergency generator, new chemical building, chemical view equipment, new mechanical screen, SBR bases, a list of things that need to be present at the wastewater treatment plant to be able to handle and process your wastewater. And if funding is available, if enough money is available, also including new maintenance building and new laboratory equipment. The cost of this project is sizable. It's over ten million dollars, which Neil gave reference to in terms of why we are seeking all these funds from multiple funding sources. This is a hefty amount for a town of this size and income level. We know the town has already increased your wastewater rates and we applaud you for being proactive in that, that fashion. And we also understand that those increases have had an impact on the residents. That's why we are actively and aggressively seeking as much grant money as we can. So in addition to this Ogra funding that Neil is helping us go after, we've also applied for grant and low-interest loan funds from the Indiana Finance and State Revolving Fund, which Neil referenced too, and USDA Rural Development. All three of these funding sources take into account both the town's small size and the relatively low median income household, low median income, low median household income, excuse me. And they, they take that into account when considering how much potential grant money and low-interest loan money they need to secure. So again, I can find any more details in terms of the project, but I think that is a brief summary of what we're trying to do.
You have questions? I don't have any questions, but I want to state for the record that all of the extra time that our maintenance guy, Andy and Jamie, have to do to keep us, because we have that agreed order. We are doing above and beyond what IDN is asking so that we, they know that we are doing our best. That, you know, they know that, that this can't be fixed either. But we are truly doing everything that we can, including cleaning stuff almost weekly that only usually gets done once every other month and stuff like that. So we are going above and beyond. That does take more of his time away from other duties within the town. And then I've asked Diana to talk a little bit about what the extra costs for maintaining the equipment that's added.
We've spent several thousand dollars on the chain. It's expired multiple times. He's been using old parts trying to fix it. And we've had, had back trucks come in and suck it out. And then just last Friday, the RBC went down again. He told me I had not talked to him since I've worked today. So I'm not sure if the guy came out. He was supposed to come out today. What it's done is there is a cement block that the mechanism sets up. And it broke that cement block, which they would have to move that thousand-pound gearbox out of the way to fix the cement. You get it later back in, right, before the return.
Isn't it draining into a ditch as it is?
Yeah, it was.
I mean, so it's not even a lot of shit.
It's not even in a ditch. It's in the retention pod.
Yeah, yeah.
But if we get a lot of rain, it won't make it to the ditch. So hopefully you got an answer today. It's still a hard sell for me.
So you have two of these, two of these RBCs.
Right.
And one is already, one is.
And one has been completely down.
Yep, and it's not.
Right, and they used it to fix the first one.
Yeah, yeah, so you're down to within prayer.
Yes.
How if we keep moving forward until we get to secure this funding and start on the on the project, but I should mention, I can come up again, I should mention briefly the schedule.
Okay.
So if we secure this funding, which we'll, we'll know by the spring, early, late summer, late winter, early spring, we'll know how much money we've been able to secure for the town. And if, if all goes well, we'll start on construction in September of twenty twenty six. It takes that long for us to secure this funding and move through the design process, move through the permitting process. It's a long, tedious process and we're using federal or state funds to make sure that we, you know, jump through all the hoops that are required for state and federal funds. But we hope to start construction on the wastewater treatment plant in September of twenty twenty six. That will be next. Yep. Do any of the residents that are here have any comments that they would like to make for the record on this subject?
What, what happens if the plant goes down before all of this stuff?
We're gonna make you stop using the restroom. Porta potta, everyone. I don't know. I don't want to find out.
When is the last time the trucks cleaned it out? It's been a long time.
I don't know. I haven't stopped it that long.
I haven't. So it's.
Yeah, we've had, we've had to have it done because of the cleaning, of something going down that they have to clean.
About five thousand dollars every time.
Yeah.
How much? Five thousand?
It depends on how many trucks they use.
Oh, okay. Because that was like a thousand of truckload.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's like five truckload.
Crap, it's expensive, I guess. Who would have thought?
So if there's a, a complete break down and a bad run like we had before, you get that inches of rain, that everything will still flood, right?
Probably, yes. Yeah. Are there any other comments?
I have one more question. If the loans and the grants don't go through, because there's no business, there's nothing to really give it to us. If they not approved, then what do we do?
The loans will go through. It's the grants that we may not get. Is that a fair assessment to say?
That is, and but with the, the shape that it's in now, we stand a really good chance of getting the grant.
We don't want to ever make any promises. Right, but, but even if we don't get the grants, we're gonna get loans. Yes, so there is. I know with the confusion on the federal level, it does appear that there is some uncertainty. But, and anything can happen, but as of right now, and we feel like into the future, you know, there is a significant amount of money in the State Revolving Fund that is set aside for projects just like this. And we know that there is also a significant amount of money in USDA Rural Development that is set aside for these kind of projects. And also money in the Ogra, which might come from HUD, set aside for projects like this. And then if you would do just a brief description on all of these tabs, I'm about to sign.
Sure.
Just, just so everybody knows that I'm not just sitting up here signing things, that there really is some method to the madness.
Just real with it. I'm not gonna walk behind you because I can't be upside down.
Okay.
Okay, this is, just saying that we've already talked about financing. And we've done an environmental review on this. The engineer has done their due diligence. Permits, we will get permits, but we can't get them until prior to construction. That's just me. They're gonna do all that.
Okay, briefly, is it this one that gives us, gives you guys the power?
That's it there. Mike will make sure we get the.
Okay, Matt needs to sign.
Yeah, Mike will make sure we get that. This says a submission of the document has been duly authorized by the governing body. And everybody has been informed. This is the, you know, four-factor analysis. We sign that if the town has a percentage of Spanish-speaking population, we have to do our advertisements in Spanish as well as English. And that's what we're saying.
I don't think we, we got some, but I don't think we have a lot.
We're getting quite a thought relation.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is your getting. Oh, the disclosure report, okay. This is your federal funding accountability. We're just identifying any other federal funding that the town may have or may not. Oh, yeah, statement of community priority and five-year maintenance. Ogra wants to make sure, I love saying this, Ogra wants to make sure that you're gonna maintain the plant for five years.
Just five? Somebody else got to manage or sign it after five?
We gotta get it all, left all over again.
And we need two of these signed?
We've got two, one for you and one for us.
Fourteen twenty twenty five.
This is the local match commitment resolution. This is just stating that the town will be committing their local match. It's specified on there.
He said, oh, something like this.
They did.
We have to pass that resolution, you think?
Yes.
We do, okay. Yeah, we're gonna need to just make a motion to pass that.
Okay, so you were saying something earlier that we really don't have to have this money?
No, so, no, I was saying that it's somewhat misleading to say it's a local match because the, it's not going to come out of the town funds. It's going to come out of the rural development and SRS funds. And it's, those two funding agencies will be giving to the town. So I just, I just didn't know if I was confusing things even more than people talking to us.
So this is a resolution of the town of Clarksville authorizing the submittal of the WDW application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing related matters. So we will officially sign this resolution today. I make a motion to sign it. And then we need a vote on it.
Brad's been saying it.
Sounds like everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
And. Now, so this is the contract here.
Yeah.
There is a clipboard. Clark, make sure you sign in on that clipboard. While we're finishing up the signing of the.
Now, I don't want to backtrack or anything, but if, we put the new sewage plant in. And is it gonna be big enough for our town to expand any at all? I mean, or is it just built for what we got here now?
No, I would imagine they.
Yeah, we did take into consideration potential expansion of the community. And it also, it's also going to be built in such a way that the wastewater treatment plant can also be expanded if you do have, if you do have more residents or businesses. So, yeah, it's a flexible piece of equipment, so to speak, that can, can be expanded as the town expands.
Okay. I just hadn't heard that throughout the whole, all the conversations I've heard that, you know, if, if we decide to do something there, make a figure.
Yeah, and that, that would make sense with the girls from Lockhead and West Lockhead, you know.
Well, Eli Lilly going in, there might be a lot more people looking for homes.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and even if they're not in Clarksville, if they are out around it, I don't think the county's gonna let them put in septic systems with our system right there. I think they'll have to to captain ours. They may have their own water, but they may get their own well, but I think they have to sign with us.
Well, with Lockhead coming out this way it is, and more people wanting to move this way. And even when they're running out, we're supposed to go south of town. If we don't, or we get more business, or we get some business.
Right. Well, if, if we get, like, the gas station out there, if we put a dollar in there on Waffle House, a Waffle House. You know, something out there, you know, it'd be nice if we could accommodate them.
Absolutely. Because we're. But the new sewage treatment plant, it hasn't changed yet. And we'll work through that, and obviously we have control. Yes, it's a flexible piece of equipment that can accommodate.
Well, could be a nice dollar digger or go out that way. That means to hopefully.
I, I don't understand why there's not one already here.
Because we're not all there anyway. Now, if we could get somebody to donate land in nine seventy-five to twenty-eight, we could.
I need one another month.
Sorry.
We'll do it. One more thing I want to mention, I think there's a survey on your Facebook page.
Yes, that probably needs to be down.
Okay.
Doesn't it?
Well, I guess, anybody?
Yeah, we can.
Oh, good for them, yeah.
We had to find two people to reply to it.
Oh, perfect, okay.
And I, I'll be honest, I was so excited to figure out how to put that on the homepage.
Well, leave it up for a while then.
That, that website's been a menace since the morning, but I doubt we finally got it.
We didn't win this one?
I do believe so, because we closed it. This, this is the regular meeting.
Okay.
This is the regular.
Yes, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
We're gonna do everything we can to get to this one.
We're gonna do everything we can to make sure you have all the stuff you need. Okay, since the special meeting is over, I now make a motion to call our regular monthly meetings ordered. I also make a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes. Before we hand the floor off to you, you are here from, let me hear from, we're supposed to have somebody here from, that's Kathy. Somebody present, somebody. Who, who's the, who's the guy that wants to rent the community building?
I don't know.
Right, you're bad.
I don't see him.
Okay, so we don't have him, so then never mind. If he's not here, we're not gonna, not, not. Sorry, I did not know. So I guess it's, it's your backup again with our contract.
Yes. So this is our, in essence, design and construction contract that we're asking you to sign tonight. I think we sent it to you several weeks ago and your attorney has vetted it, fully vetted it, from requests and changes. And his email had came in to both you, Carol and Diana. He was happy with the changes that we, that we made. So I know it appears like a significant amount of money, but, you know, you, we will not, you know, we'll, we have to wait for our notice to proceed from you to actually start to, you know, spend this money.
Okay, because we don't have money yet.
Yes.
Yeah, so as a follow-up to that, both my client Peter and myself have been verbally reassured that Tepkin County is going to loan us the money, so we will not need a ban loan.
Loan the money for the design work.
Yes, just for this part, just for this part. What they don't know yet is what fund it's going to come out of. So I kind of left that up to Tracy Brown and my client Peter to get that worked out. It's a timing thing. If we get the money and we pay them back by a certain time, it'll come out of EDIT and we can have that money right away. But if it's not gonna get paid back to be spent wherever that money was originally to be spent, it's gonna come out of the rainy day fund. And they waited too long to get the appropriations done, so we won't be able to get the money until probably closer to Thanksgiving. But it is a zero-interest loan. So we do still have to pay it back because if we were, we get in a ban loan, we just don't have a percentage of interest to pay on that.
So how much is that?
That's a million-dollar loan. So, and then that would get all of what's in here started, which is the, the design work and all of the, the legwork stuff that takes a while. So then when we do get the grant money and the loans or whatever is needed, we can hit the ground running because we've already got this part out.
So how much do you have to have to get it started?
That's the million dollars.
Wait a minute, from us?
Well.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, yes, it is from us. It's just that instead of going out to someplace and getting a loan that's happened to pay five percent interest, we are going to be getting it from the county. And we have to pay them the million dollars back. We just don't have to pay them any interest.
Yeah, I understand that, but I was, like we said, we get this started, what, where are you gonna get it?
It's the, it's paperwork. It's all sitting down at like a drafting table and starting to.
The, the Tepkin County is offering to loan the town money at a zero percent interest rate to get us started on this project. That's how much confidence Tepkin County has, both with the town of Clarksville and in this project. And, and our ability to secure this additional funding. So it's very generous, I think, on the part of Tepkin County.
And what's your timeframe on that payback?
Possibly February of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-six. It depends on when, it, it depends on when this additional funding comes in from the federal sources.
So how much is that gonna raise our water bills?
Hopefully, we are in good enough shape that it won't.
And we'll get another entry, a sewage beginning?
At some point, I'm not willing to raise it until Canstra can give me the answers that they're not giving me. And that may not be the way to look at it, but darn it. I don't like the answers that they're giving me.
What, what's the deal with the law, with the water prices?
The way I'm understanding it is they're telling, I'm understanding it that the, they're saying that the meter readings don't make a difference. It just has to do with the usage.
It's the same thing.
That's what I keep saying.
It should be the same damn thing.
But if you, I said, this is all we have to trust what's happening. If you're saying these numbers don't matter, then how do we know that we can? then how do we know that we can trust that the machines, the meters are reading like they're supposed to? But you would swear that Canstrum was a government. To try to get a straight answer out of them is frustrating.
Well, numbers is how you get paid. It's just like a time clock. If your hours aren't there, you don't get paid. So if the numbers aren't there, you don't pay in it.
But they're, they're saying that even though the numbers aren't right, the usage is. And I don't understand that. You know.
I think the, the way I figured it out online, it come, actually, with all of the shenanigans that went on with it, it come pretty close to where it should have been. Maybe not exactly on some moment, but it come close.
See, and that's what they're saying, is it doesn't matter what their, what the meter readings show up on our, our paperwork is.
But it does when you pay, it does when you do the reading, see why you're seeable. And numbers, because when you go to numbers, then you go back to zero, you pay for it again.
So, yes, and I'm very frustrated with them.
You do.
I, I feel like I'm talking in circles when we, when we talk to them.
And numbers, numbers make a difference. And for two, two years, there was not, not been a problem. Why all at once does it do this?
I think something happened in Fe- in February or March, when the numbers really started going stupid.
Well, they started, uh, they started in, what, December? December or January?
I don't think on everybody's.
Because mine, mine was December, January it spilled. And I had two or three back in the, the spring months. Because there'd be a reading and you'd pay that bill. And then the next bill, it'd go back to the month before, starting numbers, then you'd all be paid.
So I'm going to.
Why do you keep track of your numbers, people?
Thanks, thanks to Kamala, I'm going to the A conference next week, and I always forget the A part. It's, it's not the association, what is it?
It's Accelerating Indiana Municipalities.
Yeah, I remember the Indiana municipalities, but it's the, I keep wanting to call it association. But there is a, one of the sessions that they have is a roundtable for towns less than a thousand people. And I wanted to ask them, you know, what, how their water billing stuff works, and, and if they're being told the same thing, because it's, it's just a loop. Yeah, and I, I, their answers doesn't make me trust them. Not that we can do anything, because we can't afford to take their meters out and put other meters in. But unfortunately, it just makes me question everything that they say. You know, I, I just don't think they're right. And we'll talk to them, and they'll get back with us, and then we have a meter reading, and the readings go up, and it's still the same stuff, or it's slightly better, but still wrong. So the only thing I can really tell you, to give you any kind of faith in it, is I see it, we see it, we know it's there. We're just have to figure out how to get them to understand and fix it. You know, and I don't think we're much for what, I don't think it's far enough off that, like you said, that we're hurting ourselves or hurting anybody. I, I don't feel like it's over one way or the other.
It was like sixty, fifty, sixty dollars. And it didn't mean anything to you.
So is this all that we have for you?
Yes.
Okay. So we keep one, you get one?
Yes.
All right.
And I can stay with you too?
I think we're good.
I'll leave this with you. That's the location of the new wastewater plant.
Okay, so it's, it's over what we have, so Kamala doesn't need to worry about it too much.
We'll, we'll follow up with you on that.
Yes, we may want to not be quite as close, because we may need it for just parking vehicles and.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have Rob follow up with you.
Okay.
Very much.
Thank you.
I forgot about that.
I've, I've got and now I've been on this water sewage pricing. So my, my thing is, I pay my water bill every month. Why, uh, my water and sewage? Why are, is half the town not paying? If your wa- okay, if, if your water is eighteen dollars for seven months, and your sewage is forty-three something, then your, most of your figures are not reflecting that in this. Are people not paying, not catching up?
I don't, what are you looking at? Oh. Yeah.
It's, I mean, if, if we're trying to get, if we're trying to get money, if it's the sewer system, but yet your numbers are down, reflected down, what, what's that do for us if, if people's not paying?
I think most of the people are paying. I know I've got one here that I'm about to put on the front of the taxes.
Well, I, I just got out to here at some moment, and you know, when you're okay, it's just, it's just like, here's one, or the water was a hundred and forty-five, and your sewage was a hundred and seventy-two. Your, your money comes in, okay, they come in, and.
They don't have any testing. Say they do. The machine will automatically put it in water first, and what's left, they'll put in sewer, because we can put a reading on the sewer, but we can't the water. That's just the way the system's set up.
So we can't beat on the water? Do they catch it up the next month?
Yes, they usually do. Well, it's not the water, it'll be the sewage.
Sewage they catch up.
And because if they don't, they've been charged with, with, without taxes, property taxes. Or if it goes on trash. Yeah. So we do utilize putting up, um, that on the property taxes. If they, we just can't put the water on. We can only do the sewage.
Yeah, because that's what they're behind on.
Yeah. Well, they may be behind on both water and sewage, but state law, they need to put it on the water. Correct.
But it's just an, it's just a disparagement between what the water is, and then you're at forty-seven dollars, your, your sewage to be, what, two or three times what the water is.
But I know that not everybody pays everything in full. And that will mess with that, that paper. If they, if they don't pay everything in full.
Because that's what you have collected.
Correct.
Correct. Is there a system that checks out when, how much behind they are?
Yes. Okay, in some way, they just get caught up. Time comes out, then, most of them did. Unless they knew, we've got something like that, and get the reading. Do I have a budget? Anyone here say?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the second reading of the budget for, for next year as to what we can spend, I guess is the right word. So I know we've, we've all three looked at it here, there, yonder. So we need to vote on whether this stands as theirs, or whether there needs to, to be any changes. So I make a nomination to vote on this year, or next year's budget. All in favor, say aye. Aye. No.
I got another question. Can't sign, did you guys, the, on Facebook?
On Facebook or the webpage?
The webpage.
Yes.
It, it, are you updating that at all?
Yeah, I mean, it's got everything from 2025 on it, and I can't put anymore until we sign the papers tonight, and then I can put.
Okay, so I can't get your back in a minute. Can you skip that?
Well, I mean, there's nothing to update, except once a month. Um, unless we get, uh, I want to slowly put the.
I can put the budget on the future and stuff up there.
Yeah, and the, um, ordinances, you know, so some of the ordinances kind of needs to be updated before we just go flop them on there. So speaking of that one, we will move on to one next. We were contacted by the marshal that there, is, is this yours?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, our current ordinance states to operate a golf cart on the, to, to read it specific, the operator of golf cart on the town street must have a valid driver's license in his or her possession while operating a golf cart. Section five, no person may operate a golf cart on the town street unless financial responsibility is in effect with respect to the golf cart and is provided under Indiana Code nine dash twenty-five dash four dash four, as it now is, or may be amended into the future. So what we have been asked is to consider a valid state ID instead of a driver's license. So, because you don't really need a driver's license to drive a golf cart. And it would just be in town, it's that, I'm not really speeding, I'm not really out fast enough, so I'm not driving a cart, I mean, it's just.
Well, the main thing, main reason that was there was to keep kids from taking off in brush.
Right, but I mean, I'm fully ensuring Scott called. Yeah, Scott's so sure. So the way I kind of got the impression when I talked with Scott, is that if he does have somebody who has just the state ID, that he would get their drivers, or their, um, auto insurance, contact the insurance company and verify that they will cover if she is in an accident.
He didn't.
Right.
I think the homeowner, bank director covered the golf cart, didn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, no one paid separately.
And, and, yeah, that, that did too.
Well, the reason that we did that is because I drive out of Broadview, because I can't get brought in. And I drive in there, which they didn't really mind, but I still want to make sure it's just to cover my, you know, if something's out.
Right.
You know, so we just made sure that I was covered even driving there. So that's the reason why we did that. He, he got four for anniversary gift, so, for out there, so, yeah, we just wanted to.
So the only thing I don't know, and I will have to get with our attorney, is the, is there anything that the state, verbiage wise, that the state would want? You know, if, if that would be, you know, we'd be open ourselves up to anything else for just having the, the valid statewide, or the state ID. No, I can't imagine what that would be. But, but I do want to, to check with that.
Now, I assume that with a valid ID, it's over the age of eighteen, or is it sixteen? I would assume.
If we do that, I mean, if, if I were you, I'd say, hey, you know, we can put like eighteen plus. But if they're younger than eighteen, but they can get a driver's license, that's one thing.
Right.
But like eighteen plus, so you know they have to have somebody who matures if they do have a vehicle.
I also don't know when the state issues, I, that's what age they will issue an ID.
Oh, that can issue, you can get it through our office?
Yeah.
I mean, you could be great school kid with an ID.
So I think if, you know, um, we have not discussed it, they've seen, they saw the same email. But I would want to find out the correct verbiage to put an age limit. You know, um, because I, I don't want to open us up to the kids driving it around.
Right, I understand that, I totally understand that. I do. And it's just, it's like, if they're driving a vehicle, obviously they have a license. But if it's like the kid, like, I have a son, he's, he's sixteen, he hasn't had a license yet, because we don't have an extra car, you know. Training. But, I mean, he don't have one. Scott's not even riding around in the yard in it, that's hard, you know. But someone who doesn't have a license, I mean, wouldn't Scott check on all that? I mean, there's, there's some people, there's like a kid, I don't know who it was, they're driving a lawnmower that had like a modified motor in it, zooming up and down the street. You know, and I'm like, why is this kid zooming up and down the street in an R? And it wasn't allowed, because it was annoying. Up and down the street in an R, on this modified lawnmower, you know. My seat, moke, so you don't get a license for that. And, but you know, I mean, I'm not like, I understand the age thing. Honestly, I understand that, I do. But you know, I mean, I'm getting close to sixty, okay? You know, the golf cart's always just been a thing with me and my kids, and they just drive, they love driving around. Round the golf cart, round, keep it round, round, you know, they just loved it. And I just was hoping that we can continue to do that for now. But I mean, I do understand the age thing, you have to get all that situated. But I don't, I mean, even so, if I were you, I would even say, I mean, you could, you could make it any age. You could make it eighteen plus, you could make it twenty plus, whatever. I mean, kids should not be driving a golf cart unless they do have a license, I get.
Oh, yeah.
You know, um.
Then, then we're all, we're not stupid. We know when Scott's not here, it happens.
Oh, yes, we do know.
You know.
Yes, we do. I just like the modified lawnmower, I mean.
Right. So, um, do you guys have any questions or concerns, or anything that you want me to check into, other than age and whatever the, you know, verbiage might need to be, or any objection that we don't even want to go further with this? So I guess let's put it to this way, since we're trying to do everything by the looks. Let me make a motion to check further into the modification of the golf carts. Maybe put a poll out there on, no, I don't want to do that. No, I'm, I'm afraid what I answer is on my kid. But if anybody's listening and they have an opinion, they're more than welcome to email me. If you post it on Facebook, I will not reply back to you, I will guarantee that. So, um, with that said, maybe we'll, we'll further into this, which necessarily need a driver's license, but to have a state ID at a certain age. So if you're okay with me doing further, vote aye.
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 Okay. So I will look into it, or they will look into. Well.
I appreciate it.
Move this forward.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, and one more thing. I can go ahead and talk to somebody, stop, maybe. Nicole gave me a letter to give to Annie, she wants the water shut off at the meter. She said she called, and they said they couldn't do it.
You mean Nicole Roberts?
Yeah.
Nicole Green.
Oh. We did not, I said we didn't.
We did not shut the water off at the meter.
We cannot shut the water off at the meter, the meter is far. I told her that she could shut off inside and she can, you know, turn, she could turn the water coming into the house off. And I will not fill her till she's sold in or whatever.
Okay.
She said that was okay. Well, she want, she wanted it shut off, because I talked to her twice.
It's broke to the extent where we can't turn it off.
Turn it off. It's valid, turns off. So we have to pay Tuesday about a thousand dollars to come in and do it.
And it's, it's on the list of, of things that need fixed.
It's an away meter.
Do you care if I give her that information and?
No, that's fine, I told you about, but, yeah, you're fine. Okay.
Okay. You're already, you're already talking.
Well, she was talking on the phone and it was like breaking up.
Oh, okay.
It broke crackly, so.
So maybe she didn't hear that.
Maybe she didn't, she, because I told her, I said, turn it off inside. Because I told her, I said, I'll be going up there Tuesday.
Okay. Okay. Oh, there's one.
It's got not so sweet. That'd be D's.
Okay, we need to, um, make a appropriations request. Isn't that what this is?
Foot protection to do.
Road, no.
We have a money E and K B H. It's gonna cost about nineteen thousand dollars to get the roads sealed and the ones that have holes, get them patched. Like where the post office, orange tree, now you remember?
I remember that now, yeah.
But I need you guys' approval to do that.
Can you still talk to a girl about?
Andy, Andy's talking to my per cop. But it's nineteen thousand to do. Okay. The fix, cracks, the fix, like the.
The holes.
The holes on our street, orange tree.
Got a question. Um, down that, that road that I'm on. Harrison. Harrison. Yeah. But, um, down that first street there, there's this big round silver thing, and it's a bit, that, I don't know, it's a string sticking out. It, it's.
I need to check that, because that sounds like it's a water.
It's our sewer.
Yeah, there's a, there's a plate on it, it's just around, it's like silver stuff, and then one of them is a little thing. I don't know if somebody's vehicle can get hurt right out of one of it.
Okay, I'll have to.
Thank you.
And so what thought process Clark got started?
About what?
About this nineteen thousand.
Oh, that's a lot, just water to the contract.
Okay.
You get one.
There's so many about that.
I don't know whether we get more than one.
He had called a couple other people, they have not called me back.
Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah.
And they don't want to do small portions.
Yeah. Okay, so I make a motion to accept the bid of the nineteen thousand dollars to get the roads, the minor repairs and the holes, if all in favor? Are they going to get the?
How would you call those things?
Prob, probably not, not to that extent. But I know what you're talking about, you know, yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So good to know that.
I hope they fix stuff and not just bring back the same deal with the twenty grand. That's a lot of money, my opinion.
So I have been watering the flowers this year. And, um, so this one is one of those that I'm not going to vote. Because town, the Clark Show Town Pride would like to purchase another rain barrel and feed back the two rain barrels together where they're at. Because it's usually late August, or late, uh, July or October. Do you guys have any complaints about having two rain barrels there?
No.
Did you talk to Nicole or not?
No. I didn't talk a thing when we put it there the first time.
I was fine with me, I'm fair.
I didn't even say a thing to them.
I'll tell Nicole about it.
I'm speaking of what, she was supposed to be out there. Um, so wonderful area plan papers that need to be signed. Um, it is all about the placement of gas stations within, um, small areas. And we really don't have to worry about it, so I didn't figure it with. Although it was quite interesting reading on, you know, if you drive around Lockhead, gas stations seem to be blooming like flowers.
And then another one, wonderful, they're being.
So, so now they, they have, um, you can't, it says, gas station shall be prohibited within fifty-five hundred feet of a lot with an existing gas station. And you measure the shortest distance between the two properties. Yeah, it's, it, it, gas stations are prohibited within five hundred feet of residentially zone. Okay, well, that's pretty much Clark's idea. So we will sign these and get these sent back. It's funny, there was so much that I needed to cover tonight. But these are just ones that we just signed, right? Yeah. I do not have anything else. Do you guys have anything? Does anybody else out there have anything else to add? I did not, because I wasn't sure if she wanted me to know, and I don't know how to pronounce this. Jerry has a new last name.
You're? Ooh, me?
Yeah.
Oh, do I?
The B U K A S.
Oh, that wasn't my last married name.
Because when you emailed me the last time, it came through with that name on it.
You're like, that's weird, because it should come up Ripley, which is another marriage name.
The S R I B, Jerry Ripley?
I knew that was.
Yeah.
So what, what is it now?
Sumner, I think that's my maiden name, and then it was like, I dropped her. Are you cheating?
Water bill back. It came through and I, I sent it to her, I said, hey, did you know she kept her? Um, you probably need to change her. Then whatever, yeah, you should get out.
How do you pronounce that? Fugus, fugus.
I've got a question. That's the, uh, chlorine smell on the water. And mine's really bad.
Don't like it?
Um, I don't, I don't have a smell of it.
I do. Maybe it's, maybe because you're closer to the water, maybe, because mine has like, right, it's.
Yeah.
But I do smell it.
I'm wearing down.
Um, I'm a street homie, and it depends on what time of day I draw water.
That's true, that's true, too.
Because depending on when I draw water is to count four inches.
Have a landing on that.
I'm not another, I'm not, I live apart on other end of town.
Yeah, but we don't give you water, that's why.
I get my water from Stockholm. No.
Always free. All right, is there anything else?
Back to your, back to your golf cart ordinance. When that golf cart ordinance was made, it was all about keeping things legal with law. You know, as far as liability on the town is and that. So with the, with the, um, driver classes thing. You know, there's seat belts on that, on that.
Right.
Because it kept liability off the town. So what the attorney said was, I asked, well, you can sleep on some golf cart, nobody's gonna use it. Yeah, I said, right, but someone gets T-bone, just kill all the golf cart.
What I wanted. What I wanted to do, and, and, or, what I want to do, but haven't thought about it, is do, find out the, the ordinances in other towns.
That's where that got made up?
What, what they have, you know, in regards to some of the other things.
Yeah.
You know, because.
They have insurance, does that not?
This, this is from twenty eleven.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, it's probably one of those that needs to be at least looked at. Yeah.
What, what he was saying is, like, if you take a golf cart out and it don't have a seatbelt and like you wrecked, and you say, well, the town could go right from you to ride it, then that puts liability on the town instead of you.
Oh.
If it has a seatbelt, if it has a two.
The town have a problem. I know, it's my insurance, why would the town have a problem?
Right. But there are people.
She wants to sue people. Yeah. Yeah.
What are you gonna get if you sue, what, to new sewage plant?
That's a lot from the sewage plant.
You get these old sewage plants.
Yeah. Or street sign. Yeah, I'm, I'm supposed to put those street signs on Facebook, just so I'll get back to that. Um, with that, if nobody else has anything else, um, I make a motion to close the meeting.
I try next. Thank you.
And then we have a vote.